Okay, it's back on now. Good afternoon, commissioners. I think there's a presentation. I'm back, actually. I was here last fall to actually talk about this topic. A few major changes happened along the way. Most importantly, as you see here, the centralized data entry agreement as well was signed. This is really important to our Public Safety Interoperability Partnership. And Lee Creighton is going to talk about that here a little bit. So some of this will be review from last fall. Some of it will be new. But ultimately, you know, just to bottom line it, if you remember, these agreements define the support that IT gives to all of our public safety partners, City of Asheville, Woodfin, Black Mountain, Weaverville, all county fire departments, the technology and the support around that. And so ultimately, what we're here today is to ask that the commission authorize county manager to enter into these agreements now. And I should say, we've got signed agreements from all the municipalities at this point. So we are, we are ready to go. So I'll start just as a review of what the Public Safety Interoperability Partnership, PSIP as we call it. So if you remember, this is core IT support, not for their printers, not for their network and things like that. It's about the software support of the applications. You see the four of them on the screen here. It's our 911 system. It's the 911 system that's in the vehicles, those called the CAD terminals, mobile terminals. It's our records management system for law enforcement, and it's our jail management system. So likewise, all these systems, the data flows everywhere. There's lots of third-party integrations with other vendors, the state and the feds. And of course, we support the infrastructure, security, and the business administration around this program. Foundational statements, why do we do this? Right, so we do believe that public safety operations are improved when we're all in the same system. We know costs are reduced when we share the system and share access to that data. And then ultimately, we've been doing this for about 15, 20 years. And these are some formal agreements that need to be put in place so we can understand the governance model, cost models, and a fair and equitable transparent cost model. And ultimately, we're going to be doing, y'all have through the budget process, recommended a $10 million capital improvement project. We're going to replace all these systems. And so these agreements are critical to establish that governance model as we get into the next set of technology that we'll be using here. I've kind of already said some of these things, but again, the goals of these agreements are to better represent the current environment. We have a new equitable transparent cost structure. All agencies are now in this agreement. Before, it was really just between the county and the City of Asheville. But all those other municipalities and the fire departments as well are included. We have a governance committee called the PEC, the PSIP Executive Committee. And then this last one's near and dear to me, service-level agreements. What are our obligations to these partners and what are their obligations to us? Right, so for the first time, we actually have that in writing. So as a reminder, these are all the law agencies you see up on the screen and several county fire depart, our county departments as well, all of our fire departments. And you can see the members of the PEC as well. It's a group of nine, agency leadership, IT leadership, from myself and the City of Asheville. And then eventually, we're going to get two public members involved in that committee as well. So last slide here, just so you kind of know, some of this work, the whole cost, or at least for that FY25 budget, is about $1.5 million. Our previous cost share model was this 55-45 split, and then some random one-offs for a couple of the municipalities, but not all. And now you can see in our new cost share, and there's lots, it's a complicated Excel formula and workbook with lots of inputs around. It comes down to you use, you pay for what you use and you get what you pay for, right? So that being said, new to you guys is the centralized data entry concept. And again, this is really critical as part of this, and Lee's going to talk about it.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Lee Creighton, and I'm going to, as Eric mentioned, share with you about centralized data entry and the...
I have a quick question. Eric, can you speak a little bit to the community members that we'll be serving? Are there certain characteristics you're looking for?
Not, not to be defined as of yet. Someone with a technology and a public safety mindset, for sure, community focus. I know this is something that the county and the City of Asheville both have been interested in, of getting community members to be involved on these. And I have no problem with that. It's a lively group, but a transparent group, and so...
So I want to share a bit about centralized data entry with you all. It's a unit out of our Identification Bureau. They operate 24/7 every day at the Buncombe County Detention Facility. And they, they are really a key part of how our records management and our jail management system operates. They are charged with maintaining the name records, which at this point is over a million name records in the system, on behalf of the law enforcement and public safety community. So they are entering data and maintaining data within the RMS and JMS systems on a daily basis. Go to the next one. Turn it off? Nope, it's on. Here we go. Okay. Here are some of the core functions of centralized data entry. So again, they are entering data on behalf of law enforcement agencies. So the Sheriff's Office and our municipal police departments, most of which are on the RMS system supported by Buncombe County IT. So they are maintaining the name records in that, that records management system. They are also keying in all arrests that are initiated by law enforcement, magistrates, and judges in the county. They also start the booking process in our jail management system on behalf of the Sheriff's Office. They're entering data from paper and also electronic citations coming from the state system, and they're entering paper processes that are issued from the civil side of the courthouse. Just to give you a sense of the volume of data entry they provide, last fiscal year, they maintained and entered over 35,000 name records into the system. Over 9,000 arrests were entered into the system, and they initiated close to 8,000 bookings. So it is a high-volume unit that's operating over at the jail to maintain this system. This is not, sorry, y'all. So historically, the cost share for CDE has been a split between the City of Asheville and Buncombe County. For fiscal year '25, we've created a new cost model that's includes the City of Asheville as well as Black Mountain, Weaverville, Woodfin, and of course, the Sheriff's Office. And we've really tried to create a model that's equitable based off the use, utilization of CDC, CDE services. So it's built around the name record creation and management that CDE does, so ensuring that for one person, we have one record in the system, as opposed to multiple records for that one person. And then the arrest entry and then the booking entry. So under the previous cost share, it was a 55-45 split between the county and the City of Asheville. And now with the new cost share, you can see that the town of Black Mountain, Woodfin, and Weaverville have been included. And again, this is based off of utilization, so we're taking into account the number of sworn officer users, as well as the number of arrests that are being initiated by these agencies. Any questions about CDE or the cost model?
Is there, is there agreement on this from all the different partners?
Yes. Yeah, sign agreement there.
We have a signed agreement from all the partners.
Quick question.
Asheville was the 28th.
Last week they went, yeah.
Last week.
I guess just one general question. I assume this is similar to or comparative to other counties that also have municipalities, something like an Alaman's that has like 12 towns in it or something like that? Is it relatively comparative to other communities?
Not really, to be honest.
Really? We have, we have a very unique system. There's actually, centralized data entry is, is a unique unit. There, it is part of the Identification Bureau here, and there's only one other Identification Bureau in the state and Wake County. And it operates differently than this one here too does. So there's, we are, we are not an apples-to-apples situation here.
I will say, Commissioner Sloan, that we had a consultant in as we're starting our new migration project, and they toured Patch Shop, and they are so impressed. It's a best practice, in their opinion, that they see this as... So what happens a lot in other jurisdictions is they don't have the AKAs, the master name match, and things like that. So you arrest the wrong people or, and Patch Shop does all the expungements as well. So you get issues with people, you know, having things that aren't properly expunged. So this group really does, you know, make our data as clean as it can be, which I think, you know, ultimately has some really important ramifications to our public safety response and the efforts around our citizens, so...
I appreciate that. I was just about to ask you, my understanding was this is very much in line with where people want to be five, six years down the road in other jurisdictions. And specifically on the avoiding getting the wrong person, the AKAs is a huge one, since a lot of processing time is wasted trying to find the correct... You figure there are juniors and thirds in this part of the world, so that spares us a lot on the legal front as well, so it seems like a great opportunity to patch that up.
And I'll say lastly, you know, both these agreements, we've been walking this walk for 15 years, right? It's a formalization of something that's been long in place and about time, to be honest, so... So I don't think there's any more slides. Well, next step, we will be asking you, if there's no issues, we would probably put this on consent if that's agreeable, but to go ahead and approve our Avril to enter into these agreements. And I mentioned this before, but we're already meeting with our consultants, and we're getting a RFP out in the streets in the next couple of months to replace all these systems and go to the latest and greatest set of technologies. Our systems are a bit antiquated, our 911 system, I'm sure you've heard about. Served us well, but it's time to move on. Any other questions or discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, next item is the Quarterly Continuum of Care update.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to share an update with you all today about activities to address homelessness and our continuum of care for homelessness services. I'm going to be covering a few topics today, so I wanted to just go over an overview. I want to talk with you about the latest information about our homeless population by sharing the results of this year's PIT count with you. I also want to talk about funding and supported activities. I would like to share with you all information about HUD COC funding and the competition for this year, how Code Purple has gone for this year, and an update on the temporary shelter bed expansion. I want to give you a brief update on the shelter planning process. And last but not least, I want to also update you on the shelter, I mean, the, sorry, the COC transition. So beginning with the point-in-time count overview, or the PIT count. So this is a federally required count that is, it's required to occur every two years. In our community, we do it every year during the last 10 days in January. This is a census of people who meet the literal definition, the federal definition of literal homelessness. So those are folks in emergency shelters, in transitional housing, or who are unsheltered on our streets or in locations that are not fit for human habitation. It covers the full continuum of care, so it's all of Buncombe County and municipalities. And in this year's PIT count, we expanded our methodology. Typically, we do one-day count. This year, we did an evening count and then a morning count on January 30th and 31st. We also historically have had folks at service locations, most notably A-Hope and Haywood Street, conducting surveys. This year, we expanded those locations. There were more locations in town also helping with surveys. And there was a very coordinated effort to do outreach to encampments, both in the evening and in the morning. The PIT count was managed by city staff, and it's conducted by providers and volunteers each year. And so here you see our point-in-time count results from 2020 to this year. 2024 is on the right side here in bold. If we look at these numbers, the sheltered number of 520 individuals, that reflects a return to, I would say, baseline utilization, maybe a little more because we've added some shelter beds, of shelter beds in our community. Our unsheltered count, as you can see, has increased significantly. This is probably in part due to the expanded methodology that was employed this year. We have a, probably a more accurate count that we're looking at here. But I think it's important to maintain the perspective. It is still an increase, whether it's, whether it's a more accurate count or an actual increase, it's probably both. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but it does reflect a large number of unsheltered people in our community, and we need to continue to work to figure out ways to serve those folks. I wanted to also share the point-in-time count information in terms of sub-demographic characteristics, starting with race and ethnicity. For the most part, the percentage of the total count that you see here for each race and ethnicity has stayed close to the same as in past years. But I do want to note that like, like last year and years past, the numbers continue to reflect that there's a disproportionate number of Black, African-American, and African individuals on our streets as compared to the population of the county at large. I also wanted to share some information by gender and age. Of particular interest to me are the number of folks with culturally specific identities, transgender, non-binary, and multiple gender. Those numbers, the, the numbers of people are small, but those folks are particularly vulnerable on our streets. So it's good to have these numbers so that we can take them into consideration as well as we're figuring out how to increase services and make sure that we're taking care of the most vulnerable folks in our community. Similarly, I was concerned by the numbers that you see here for the folks under 18 who are unhoused, as well as elderly individuals 65 and older. Both of those numbers seem a bit alarmingly high to me. They also reflect what I've been hearing from shelter providers in the community that both of these populations are growing. Before I move on to my next update, do you all have any questions about this year's point-in-time count?
Yes, Lacey.
Can you give us a insight on what is, what is happening specifically within those two age groups that you just mentioned?
Yeah, well, so in terms of under 18, we're seeing more families unhoused. And there are shelter beds for families in our community, but we don't have enough. So we're seeing more families experiencing homelessness and at imminent risk of homelessness. And we're still trying to catch up in terms of beds and housing interventions for those individuals. And then in terms of the elderly population, I think that affordable housing is something that is largely at play here. A lot of those folks are not increasing their income, and so they're getting priced out of housing here and, and across the country. This is a nationwide trend. Yeah.
And Lacey, looking at the sheltered, so would that include the Veterans Restoration Quarters?
It does include the Veterans Restoration Quarters.
Okay. I was just wondering, with that 26% veterans, or do we have any kind of breakdown also of the difference, right, with sheltered and unsheltered within that? Do we have any breakdown within that with some of these that you've called out?
I believe that there is a breakdown of that, that I'd be happy to forward on to you all. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions before I move on? All right. Next, I wanted to share with you all information about HUD COC funding in our community. So this is federal funding that supports homelessness and housing programs. And you can see here that it represents a large chunk of the funding that's available in our community for these services. Back in September, the Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee approved the consolidated application for fiscal year '23 HUD COC funding. And we received those award notifications earlier this year. Most of the funding awards for this most recent application will be utilized beginning in January of next year. There will be some, a couple of contracts beginning this year. So looking at the chart, I wanted to share with you all funding amounts that are currently active for programs this year. That's the fiscal year '22 award with activities and expenses beginning in January of 2024. So we have Helpmate Rapid Rehousing Projects, Homeward Bound's Permanent Supportive Housing Projects, and then support for the City of Asheville for planning and for their HMIS management. So you can see here, we, we got about 1.9 million last year. We're up to 2.1 this year for, well, beginning this year for services. Any questions about that? Okay. Moving on, I wanted to share an update now that the Code Purple season has concluded. This year, there was quite a bit of work done to improve service coordination between shelter providers, city transit, community paramedics, first responders. And by all accounts, that coordination has really been very helpful to providers, as well as to the folks who've been served by Code Purple this year. So we, we had Code Purple from October 15th to April 30th. This is a bit of an expanded time period. It's been expanded for the last year or two now to these parameters. We also expanded the, the parameters for calling Code Purple. So in years past, it's typically been called when the temperature is at 32 or below, including the wind chill. This year, we also added a parameter so that if the temperature was between 33 and 40 degrees with precipitation in the forecast, we would also call Code Purple those days as well. The locations this year were the Veterans Restoration Quarters, Transformation Village, and the Salvation Army. And you can see here that we had 101 nights total of Code Purple, maximum use on a single night of 146 people. That was on January 18th, which was right after that very, very cold weekend. And then average use of around 73 people per night. I also wanted to, I wanted to say thank you to the Salvation Army and to ABCCM, and in particular to ABCCM. Code Purple is funded by Buncombe County and the City of Asheville. And when our funding was exhausted, ABCCM continued to provide Code Purple nights through, through the Code Purple season without any additional funding from the city or the county. So just wanted to recognize them for that. Any questions about Code Purple?
Can I ask, just out of curiosity, is that the most common, I guess, parameters for when we're calling Code Purple, the most expansive? Because that seems kind of intuitive that rain would probably be less desirable to be in than...
Yeah, I mean, it is the most expansive that our community has put in place, yeah. And I'm, I think that the providers and the folks who have coordinated Code Purple are very hopeful that that may be something we'll be able to consider in future years as well.
Thank you.
Okay. I also wanted to share an update on the temporary shelter bed expansion. So the Buncombe County commitment for that expansion was $875,000. There were three beds funded at Haywood Street Respite. Those beds have been consistently filled since they came online last fall. And Haywood Street has been able to leverage this funding with some national respite grant funding to expand their focus to include behavioral health respite, and they've created a respite clinician position. The Salvation Army has 65 beds currently in operation. They are exploring the feasibility of adding an additional 20 beds at 204 Haywood Street. And they are also exploring the feasibility of conversion of some of their other property for additional shelter space right now. Safe Shelter has 20 beds currently in operation. They actually ended up being located at A-Hope through April. They are currently at Grace Episcopal Church through the month of May. And right now, they're confirming some options for space partners beyond May. And I just want to note that all 43 of the expansion beds have been consistently filled since they came online.
I see one question there.
Yeah.
Remind me, this is covered until when, this temporary shelter bed expansion?
December of this year.
December of this year.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, next up, I wanted to provide a brief update on efforts to continue with planning for low-barrier shelter in our community. As we've continued planning, we have been focusing most recently on seeking feedback from folks with lived experience of homelessness in our community, as well as service providers. We've done a number of focus groups that you'll see here. There are a few more still scheduled. We also had two meetings with service providers where we got a lot of good feedback. We've gotten a lot of good feedback from all of these focus groups so far. Some of that has already been shared with the shelter planning team. We'll be sharing more with them as we wrap up these focus groups. And also, we'll be planning to share with the new continuum of care in the near future too. And I just want to say, we've gotten a wide variety of, of feedback. But the one thing that I have heard consistently is that folks with lived experience, people who are actually homeless in our community right now, are very grateful that we are speaking with them about this and seeking input from them. And then, last but not least, all of this activity has been happening in tandem with the continued effort to restructure our continuum of care. So we have a new charter that was endorsed by the Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee on February 8th. The first meeting of the new membership body occurred on February 29th. And at that meeting, they voted to approve that charter or adopt that charter. The second meeting of the membership body occurred on April 25th. And at that meeting, they approved the slate of candidates for the new governing board. And they also heard the PIT count results that I shared with you all today. Next steps, our initial COC board meeting is happening this Thursday evening. And in mid-June, there will be two half-days of board training for the new COC board. We are seeking to appoint the funding committee for the new COC as quickly as possible because HUD COC funding, that can, that competition will begin a little earlier this year. Typically, it's early fall, and this year it will likely be in the summer, as well as the ESG funding competition. So they have some work they will immediately need to do. And the COC board is going to set the next COC, COC membership meeting. I also anticipate that at that COC board meeting, we will be talking about plans to transition, planning for shelter expansion, permanent shelter expansion, rather, into the COC. And then, at some point over the summer, we anticipate that there will be a request to city council to dissolve the Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee. Any questions about that or any of the other things that I have shared?
Well, one more question. You mentioned on Code Purple that we ran out of funds. Can you speak more to that?
Yeah, so the contract that we have with the city indicates that we can spend up to $60,000 matching the city. The city budgeted $50,000, so, and to my knowledge, they have not increased that.
Thank you for the question.
Yeah. I also wanted to just share here right now that we are up to, it may be even a little higher than this now, but we are up to around 263 individual community members who are part of the COC and 53 organizations that are members of the COC. So there's a lot of momentum behind this effort right now.
Is there any update? You know, when we had our joint meeting with the city council, there was this discussion about the compensation for people on the board with lived experience to actually serve on the board? Has there been any progress or resolution to that item, or is that still sort of being talked about?
At our most recent Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee meeting, that was one of the things that the, the board discussed. And I believe there was a work group that was put together to kind of investigate how that may be able to be done, but they did not come to any firm conclusions at this time. Hyatt did vote to make a recommendation to the city and the county that we figure out how to compensate folks with lived experience.
So they have, so there's a group working on it? Or they voted for us to just do it?
I think they, they met and had some conversations.
Or is it our job to figure it out? Or are they going to come back with some specific recommendation for how to do it? And it's just a question of funding it?
I don't think that the, the group that was meeting is going to make any specific recommendations. I think the hope is maybe that with the new COC continuing to get up and running, that that will be something that might be more specifically worked on with the new board.
Okay. And, and is it something that... And is it something that, is it something that, I mean, if we're just talking about the individuals with lived experience serving on the board, I don't think this is like a large budget item, right? Is it something that the organization has the capacity to do internally with some of the resources they have? Or is it something that would not be a permissible use of funds with the sources of revenue that they have, and therefore, you know, the city and the county would need to be the contributor for resources to do that?
Do you mean, by organization, do you mean the COC?
Yes.
The COC is a planning body. So I think the funding that they currently work with, HUD COC funding and ESG funding, I don't think would allow for compensation. But it could be that the COC Funding Committee could investigate other options, maybe city, maybe county, maybe even additional funding sources beyond that that may be able to help with this.
Okay. Well, I would just, you know, speak up for, I think it makes sense, right? I mean, I think the outreach to people with lived experience makes sense, but if you do want people on this board in particular, and we've talked about this more broadly, but I do think this is like, if you were going to do it on any one new board, to me, this would be the one to do it. You're looking for folks who have, you know, lived homelessness, you know, have that perspective. And so I just think it's, there's a good argument for it, even if we decide we're just going to support this here before we, you know, kind of revisit doing it in a more universal way. So I'm in favor of it, and if we need to be a partner in it, I'm open to it.
Excellent.
Any other questions or thoughts on this item, or any others?
I would agree, especially in any way, the ability of the work to include people.
Question I, now, are we just paying the people who have the homeless, you know, experience? We're not going to pay the whole board. It could be people on there who don't need to be paid.
I mean, I think that's, I think that's been the working assumption that folks have had around this. A lot of the folks who serve on this board work professionally for organizations that are involved in homelessness and are paid to be there. So I think we're talking about the folks who are volunteering their time, and particularly those who, you know, who have this lived experience perspective, that's very valuable to be represented in the ongoing decision-making of the organization. All right, other questions? Great presentation. Any other questions or comments at this time? All right, thanks, Lacey, appreciate it. All right, the next item on the agenda is an update on some of the affordable, on financing options for some of the affordable housing developments.
Commissioner, as Melissa's making her way, these are some of the questions that you asked at our last work session, specifically around LOBS funding for Ferry Road.
Hi, good afternoon. I wanted to provide an update on a couple of the county projects focused on affordable housing. So the two projects that we're looking at this afternoon are Ferry Road and Cox Avenue. So just a brief summary, Ferry Road, the overall project provides additional 645 total units. And with estimated construction starting in 2026, that project, construction is in phases, so 2026 construction would just be the first phase. We're estimating the county's contribution toward funding would be about 34 million. And we'll discuss further the funding options available for that project. For Cox Avenue, the project would provide 200 units toward affordable housing. Construction also to start estimated around 2026. Looking at the county funding, about 10 million could be, there was a range given, but 10 million is kind of the middle of that. The recommended funding would be to allocate the remaining authorized geo bonds that we have for affordable housing. Well, there we go. So looking at the funding options for the Ferry Road project, there's two options. You can go with your general obligation, or your limited obligation, or your LOBS. So there's pros and cons in both. So with your general obligation, you're going to have a lot more flexibility. You can use those bond proceeds in a mixed-use project. You would need to seek voter approval, so it'd be voter approval as well as Board of Commissioners and LGC. You would need to prepare for the referendum. It is the lowest cost of capital. So with the flexibility, as we've done with the general obligations for the bonds that we have, and we've been deploying those bonds through low-interest loans to developers, okay? If we did the LOBS route, we wouldn't be able to structure it exactly like that. So if we look at limited obligation bonds, we'd be able to use those bond proceeds limited to just 100% affordable housing units. It would be required for us to create a developer partnership for the mixed-use project. It would require Board of Commissioners and LGC approval. And we would need time to work on structuring how that developer agreement and how we procure those contracts toward constructing that project.
Quick clarification question on the limited obligation bond bullet, your 100% affordable bullet there. Are you referring to just the portion of the project being affordable? Like, we could only pay for that, that portion of the project?
Correct.
In the capital stack?
Okay. So, got a few different questions on this. So, one is, what's the, you know, knowing there's no crystal ball around like where interest rates are going to be in two or three or four years, but what's the likely differential in interest rates or like capital costs for limited obligation versus general obligation bonds? Like, if we had them today, and we didn't win today, what's the, how different is it?
Sure. So the way that we're currently using our geo bonds in affordable housing, we're using them as low-interest loans. So I think I've seen one agreement that was at 2%. So if you look at that as a payback to kind of almost buy down, if you will, the interest rate that we're locked into when we issued those bonds, that lowers your cost of capital theoretically, right? We don't have that on the LOBS side, right? And we wouldn't be able to do the low-interest loans. So that's where, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, let's get, let's come to that in just a second. But so just in terms of like the county's cost of capital, like if we went out and did, I'm just using a round number, let's do, we did $20 million, and we did it as a geo bond versus limited obligation bonds, what's the county's cost of capital, right? Because as I understand it, when we go out and borrow money to do them, that the geo bond is going to have a lower interest rate than a limited obligation bond to Buncombe County?
That's correct.
And what's the differential there? Is it really close, or is it like quite, you know, quite a spread?
Well, your credit rating on a geo bond is a AAA. And then, you have one notch below it, AA+ for limited obligation bonds, okay? So that's what's really driving the difference in your cost of capital. So if you go out, both of these for this specific project are going to be taxable. So we just went to market last week and did our geo bonds, and it was right under 5%. So let's say that we did the same deal, except we went into the LOBS market. It's still going to be taxable, but you're looking, investors are looking at it in AA category instead of AAA. I can't really tell you for sure. It's going to be close, but you're looking at maybe 50 basis points, maybe, I don't know.
Okay. Okay. So there, it's, the geo bond is a little bit, you know, more attractive, but it's not like this huge difference. It's just, it's just a little bit more advantageous in that regard from the county's financing. As we repay the funds over time, it's got a slight advantage in that regard.
Yes, with the flexibility also of being able to do low-interest loans. So that's kind of the major difference.
Okay. Now, let's come to the other part that I think you were about to speak, you were about to speak to. So, yeah, so as we invest our general obligation, the voter-approved general obligation bonds into projects, we're primarily doing that by providing these very low-interest loans to developers, right? So that that's part of how they can have a viable business case to make the projects affordable, to their tenants and homeowners. So there's legal reasons why we cannot use that structure if we utilize a limited obligation bond instead of a geo bond.
That's correct.
All right, okay. So do we have clear ideas for how we can structure the financing to invest in an affordable housing development, utilizing the limited obligation bonds, since it sounds like the traditional very-low-interest loan structure is not on the table?
Correct.
So if we have this, let's say we have a development partner, whoever that is, how do we provide the funds to the project so that it can be used for this purpose?
Through that master development agreement. So we would have to structure that to where it meets a couple of different state statutes for how we can utilize those bond proceeds, but it wouldn't be in the structure of a low-interest loan.
Could you just say a little bit more about like what it would look like?
It could be, so you're...
We would want to, we would want to get, it would be, it wouldn't be a grant, right? Like, we would want to get some kind of return on that investment over time, have it be repaid over time, even if it's a long, long period of time. Or, that's my question, I mean, that's our, that would traditionally be our goal. Is there a way to do that? I guess is what I'm seeking to understand.
Not through a lot.
So we would be like a grant to the project, not a loan? I'm probably oversimplifying it, but like...
That seems like where it's an adjective and not a legal term, because...
I understand, yes. I'm just trying to understand in very simplistic terms, like how we should think about...
It would be an investment.
Such an investment. It would be...
Yes, we would invest approximately 34 million into this project.
Okay, all right, so are there indirect ways that we could seek reimbursements from a developer as part of a long-term partnership agreement? Like, if we own the land, is there a way to say like, we're going to look, we're going to make this investment in infrastructure and capital costs? However, we do own the land, and here is what the, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to broadly understand what the different options could look like for use of funds in this way.
Yeah, we didn't research further if that was an option. The low-interest, the low-interest rate loan was not an option. I can't think just, you know, off the cuff about other ways. We could explore that right now. It didn't look like that was an option, but I don't want to say it's not. We can, we can go back and refer with Bond Counsel as well as Mr. Frue to look into those options, if that could be something included in that master development agreement or not.
All right, well, it seems like we still need a lot of, you know, we still need some pretty basic information about the limited obligation bonds, like as a potential tool. I mean, and part of the reason I would really like for us to have a better understanding about the limited obligation bonds is that, I mean, one of the concerns I have about utilizing the geo bonds for these, for either of these projects, is, part of it's just around timing, right? Like, these projects are moving ahead in a planning process, right? So you can only do geo bonds on election cycles, right? And like, we're in one right now, we're not doing it this year. Perhaps we could do one in 2026.
Correct.
And, but it's also because it requires voter approval, there's no certainty about the outcome of them, right? Like, there's good reason to think the voters would be supportive of it, they have been before. But if we're negotiating development agreements with different partners, which we're going to, as I recall the timelines, we're going to start getting into some of those things in the future, and we just say, gosh, I sure hope the voters approve these things, otherwise this is all, you know, we're wasting your time. So if limited obligation bonds are a potentially viable system for financing one or both of these projects, then it sort of allows us to control our fate as we're planning these projects in a way that geo bonds have this sort of inherent uncertainty associated with them until a referendum is held and completed. And I'm certainly in favor of holding an additional voter referendum on affordable housing investments in the future. But for projects that we're sort of, you know, entering into an active development process on it, it would be really desirable to have a financing option that the county could simply, you know, choose to implement, and it's within the county commission's authority to do so. So I just want to kind of like more thoroughly understand how the geo, how the limited obligation bonds could work for one or even both of these projects.
So to answer your question, Melissa and Frue helped me here. The answer is yes, a LOBS could be used. The model that we currently use where it's a loan to the developer, that is the place that gives us the most issues. We cannot give a loan for a LOBS. It would have to be a straight-out investment into the project. So if it's a county project, typically, we would go and we would build the building, so to speak. That is exactly how the LOBS would work. We can make investments on that property using a LOBS, but the piece that you're trying to talk there around a loan, that is the piece that is not allowed with a LOBS.
I'm...
So we couldn't do that piece. But the answer, yes, you could use a LOBS to finance this project, but you will have to use it as an investment into the project.
I understand a loan cannot be used, that's clear. But I think there's a lot of different ways, like, but then what that investment looks like, it sounds like there's still a lot of unknowns around how that could potentially work. So I just want to understand what the alternatives to a loan could look like, is my, is what seems like we don't have a lot of depth of understanding around that question yet. I mean, you're saying it can't be a grant. Anyway, just like, that should be fleshed out, is my point.
Is it, is it fair to say that LOBS are traditionally used for public infrastructure, that it's also used for like public use and public purpose?
Typically, that's what we use them for.
Like a government building?
Yeah, like a government building, is that? Yeah, okay, a park, that sort of thing, okay.
The LOBS are created to improve the property. So yes, we use them for schools, we use them for any other thing.
Which is the nexus between the advice we're getting, that we can only use this option for publicly-owned land, that we can put up as collateral?
It wouldn't be exclusively. I mean, if, that's what the public-private partnership statute would allow with the limited obligation bonds. As Melissa was explaining, there's a few restrictions as to how it can be used. But the public-private partnership allows the local government to negotiate and partner with a private entity to do a public-purpose project, which can include private elements. So part of that negotiation with that development partner, which is started through DFI, would include property interests of the governmental entity and other participants, the responsibilities of the parties regarding the development, and the responsibility of the parties with respect to financing. So it's just a different mechanism, and it's not something we've entered into, so I anticipate it'll take some work to get there, but that would be the avenue that we would recommend.
And Frue, would it be true to say that within the arena of public-private partnership law, that a private entity paying a local government a long-term lease, is permissible? Is that generally allowed?
If we're going the LOB route, then both the LOB proper, the issuance of $34 million, we'd have to go to the LGC. The public-private partnership statute requires that any lease of property within that development to a private partner would also have to be approved by the LGC.
It could be done, pending approval by the LGC?
Yes.
Okay.
Bond Counsel made no promises, but I understand that, you know, they're signing off on the process, 168-20, which is the limited obligation bond statute, that's all they're really looking for. It's up to us to figure out how to make it legal and work.
Do we have any examples of projects that have affordable housing developments that have used limited obligation bonds to be financed?
We have not found any. We have asked some of our partners to, that have the clients doing that. If we have some, we'll share the structures with you.
Okay. And so understanding we don't have that now, is there a sense that like, maybe, maybe it has never been done, or just like, we just haven't kind of dug into that question at this time?
It doesn't look like North Carolina has used LOBS through a public-private partnership to invest in affordable housing. But as we've researched with legal counsel, it wouldn't violate any of the state's... violate any of the, the state statutes. There would be your guardrails in, in your requirements, but we would be able to invest bond proceeds in affordable housing under a public-private partnership or a development partnership.
Okay. I guess just let me, let's, a couple of clarifying questions on this. What is, what is the, what's the reason limited obligation, limited obligation bonds could not be invested as a loan structure? What's the simplest answer you could give on, like, why that's not a permissible use of, of that funding source?
Yeah, I'm gonna defer to our-
Thank you, sure.
Those two elements are specifically authorized in the GO bond statute in chapter one fifty-nine. When you go to one sixty-D, where you, one sixty-eight and one sixty-D, where you're looking at the limited obligation bonds, the development of affordable housing by counties is restricted in that regard, and grants and loans are not allowed for affordable housing.
Under limited obligation bonds?
Correct.
Okay.
It's not stated in that statute.
Okay, but it-
Those two elements are just not on the list.
Then what's, then if they're, they're not specifically spelled out as authorized, then what's your, what's your, what makes you comfortable with the idea that we can in fact do that?
Well, because what the statute does authorize is a county to develop affordable housing. And if you look at it in context with all the other statute, that means that section of the county's investment in that development, public-private partnership, that element has to be one hundred percent affordable. So that could be a hundred units, whatever that is, but that, that's gonna have to be able to be delineated and audited, and it has to be specific for that purpose.
Go ahead, Parker.
What, I guess, I just wanna restate, so one sixty-D, you said is the section that has the LOBS in it?
Yeah, we're jumping around honestly between about four different statutes that speak to affordable housing. The point, the main point is, is that counties don't have as broad authorities as municipalities.
Ah, okay, but there's, there's a statute that speaks to LOBS and county's ability to use them, and it just doesn't, it mentions grants or whatever the adjective is, but it does not mention loans. Is that, am I rephrasing what you've said correctly?
Well, another way to put that is the, the taxing authority for counties is one fifty-three-A, one forty-nine. It specifically authorizes investment for affordable housing. It says if you're not using the, the specific statute, which kicks you to one sixty-D thirteen-sixteen, you, you are restricted to that unless you have a referendum through the taxing statute. So again, it's just a restriction of authorities for counties.
My last thought or question would be, if we've talked to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency about LOBS, and I guess part of why I ask is, I'm just trying to picture a, a pro forma or a capital stack in one of these nonprofit affordable housing developers, and just, I'm wondering if there's other parts of their funding scheme that would be impacted or affected by the use of, of LOBS? Just making sure we're not messing ourselves up.
We're working on that with Sarah, that's the one call that we're working on.
Okay, she's working on that?
Sure that the light tech does not impact.
All the light tech, yeah, yeah, okay.
Exactly.
Fantastic, okay.
Right. Well, we're getting, like, way down in the weeds on, like, financing statutes, right? That we're not gonna, like, figure this all out here, but I would just say, like, my high-level concerns are that, is that, is that, you know, we don't have the timelines for these two projects, like, right in front of us, but we have looked at those recently, and, you know, and they are kind of, you know, they both have a timeline for moving ahead, so I do have, I do have a concern that kind of taking limited obligation bonds as an option off the table for either of these two projects, like, right now, could kind of throw this huge, could hang this huge uncertainty over each of them. So I would really like to kind of thoroughly understand, you know, can limited obligation bonds be used for these projects? And if so, kind of like, understand that in a bit more detail. And maybe once we look at that, we say, this is, this is not a good option, or this is, or there's big question, there's big legal question marks, and too much, like, we're trying to do something too unprecedented here, and it's gonna, you know, maybe it has its uncertainties of its own, but I'd really like to understand it in more detail. Like, we're not gonna, you know, we don't need to do that in this meeting right now, but I'd like, I'd like to kind of continue to keep that as something that we're looking at over the next, you know, weeks and months, like, to really kind of explore that in more detail. If, and, and then, and then second, you know, just a little bit more detail there, if there is a way to use limited obligation bonds in a way that we can make an investment in a project, but in some way, through a development partnership agreement or otherwise, recoup that investment over a long period of time, I think that's a good thing, just so we can reinvest them into other public purposes in the future. If that's not an option, I don't think that's necessarily a, a deal killer. Like, a lot of developers will tell us, you know, if you, a lot of developers say to us all the time, like, well, I sure wish you would give us a grant instead of giving us a loan, because it really helps, you know, not having to repay it sure helps the pro forma, right? And, and, and if you do make an investment in a more grant-like form instead of a loan, you oftentimes have to invest much less, right? Like, the amount of subsidy a developer needs is a, as like a, a non, you know, something they don't have to pay back, is a lot less than if they have to repay it over time. So it's not necessarily a terrible option, but I just would like to understand, just understand this in, in some more depth. The one other, the one other observation I would share is that if we did dedicate the, all the, if we dedicate, if we basically work in the assumption that we're gonna do Cox Avenue with GEO bonds, basically all of the large, large majority of those funds would now be dedicated with that project and the other projects that the Affordable Housing Committee has reviewed this year, which means we won't be taking on any new projects between now and when the voters do another referendum, and if that's three or four years away, that basically means, like, we're kind of done. And, and, and that sounds bad, I mean, the good news is, like, we've, we are supporting a really robust set of very significant projects, so we're putting those funds to work, but it, but I do wanna look at the glass half-empty on that, which means, like, there will not be any new significant projects that we could be a partner on until, you know, twenty-twenty-six, or sometime thereafter, when the voters have a chance to weigh in again, whereas if we use limited obligation bonds for these two county-initiated developments, it will, it will create more space for the voter obligation, the voter-approved funds to do some more work between now and when the voters get a chance to have another say about how much we want to support this issue in our community. So those are, those are all of my kind of thoughts on these items. Other, other questions or comments on this, you know, thank you for the update, you know, we're not voting on this right now, but this is a good, a helpful discussion as we start thinking about, about this, you know, kind of the path we're gonna take on this going forward. Other, other thoughts or questions at this time? Okay, all right, okay, thank you, Melissa, appreciate the updates. Okay, the last item is the Just Home Grant.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm here with Raphael, and we're introducing the Just Home Project Grant Opportunity, which would complement our Safety and Justice Challenge initiatives that we're currently doing as a county. Okay, so the purpose of this grant opportunity is to support efforts that aim to break the cycle of jail incarceration and housing instability through community-driven solutions, with an explicit goal to reduce harms and negative outcomes disproportionately experienced by people of color. The funders for this opportunity are the MacArthur Grant, who is the funder for all the other Safety and Justice Challenge opportunities, and the addition of the Urban Institute, who is providing technical assistance for this opportunity. So there are ten of the existing Safety and Justice Challenge sites were invited to apply, so that was, we were one of those sites, and they are select, they selected six of those sites to fund. The funding that we could apply for, so that we could apply for up to three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for planning and implementation, and then, as a result of the deliverables at the end of that planning period, we would have access to two and a half to five million dollars in program-related investment loan funds to support the housing solutions that result from that planning period. Additionally, another stipulation of this opportunity was that the project lead couldn't be the Criminal Justice Agency within the county, because it's supposed to be collaborative and cross-sector. And then another thing I'll note, too, is that this is the second iteration of this grant opportunity, so we would be a part of the second cohort. Okay, so staff pulled together the, the following project partners to apply for this grant opportunity. The lead partner is the Buncombe County Planning and Development Department. The Criminal Justice System partner that we identified is our Justice Services Department. Our housing partner was Mountain Housing Opportunities. Our community engagement partner was our Safety and Justice Challenge Community Engagement Work Group, which is made up of a bunch of organizations and county departments. And then our evaluation partners, we decided to go with two, was for housing was Thrive Asheville, and then for Criminal Justice Outcomes was Dr. Jamie Vasky at Western Carolina University, and she currently works with some of our other Safety and Justice Challenge initiatives. And then for this grant application, we also had letters of support from the Asheville Police Department, Buncombe County Emergency Services, the Chief District Court Judge, and Buncombe County Sheriff's Office.
I would add that we had a letter of support from the Dogwood Health Trust as well.
Yes. Sorry, having trouble with the remote. So the structure, okay, the structure of this grant opportunity is that for the nine months, there are several deliverables that we would, or that if we were, if we decide to go with this grant opportunity, that we would do. So one of those is developing a community engagement plan, doing a target population analysis, doing a gap and barrier analysis, and then all of those, all of that data and information that we would gather through those processes, that would then develop a housing investment action plan at the end of the planning period. And then the implementation phase is the next eighteen months after that, so that's when we would implement that housing investment action plan and be able to operationalize those program-related investment funds, those loan funds that I mentioned before. So this grant opportunity, as I mentioned, it complements our Safety and Justice Challenge work that we're doing. It would allow us to have access to a peer learning network, so the, the first cohort was made up of cities and counties across the US, and the second cohort will be as well, so we'll have peers in our, our city and county, we'll have city and county peers who we can look to and learn from. We'll also have expert technical support from the Urban Institute on implementing this type of supportive housing solutions, and then we'll also, we would also have access to those investment resources. And this slide is just depicting some of the alignment with, with our other county plans and strategic initiatives, or it would advance our strategic plan, comprehensive plan, community health improvement priorities, racial equity action plan, and the work of our reparations commission. And I'll also note, too, that it would, there's also a lot of overlap with this grant and our, our work of our jail and diversion and reentry services, our justice resource advisory council, and our behavioral health justice collaborative, as well as our housing and homelessness initiatives. So the RFA was announced in December of twenty-twenty-three. We submitted our application on March eighth of twenty-twenty-four. We then participated in an interview on April eighteenth, and then we learned on May seventh that we were selected as a site. And so staff are awaiting an award agreement, like, an official document from the Urban Institute and MacArthur Foundation, and we anticipate bringing that to you at the June fourth Board of Commissioners meeting for your potential approval. And so the RBA will kind of go into more of this, but I, we just wanted to highlight some of the grant-funded activities that we would, that we applied for. So during that nine-month planning period, we applied for a full-time project planner and a, and a part-time grants manager. We also included funding for consultant fees, compensation for the staff time of our community-based organizations who would be involved, as well as the time of our community members, especially those who have lived experience with housing instability and jail incarceration. And then we would also, we also included funds for engagement of our local evaluation, local evaluation partners, so they would, they would be paid travel expenses, meeting expenses, and office supplies. So this is my last slide, but I wanted to see if there were any questions about the grant opportunity, things that I can maybe learn, or I can research and come back to you at the next Board of Commissioners meeting.
I have a quick question. What, so when we receive back this award letter, I guess two questions for that. One, is this, for the position specifically, the project planner, something that we're planning to absorb after the nine months, or just ends at the contract ending there?
So what, the MacArthur Foundation has indicated that they would potentially extend that, those positions into the implementation period, but for right now, we only applied for funds for those nine months through the grant.
One thing that we've committed to Commissioner is that with all grants, we let employees know if they're coming in on a grant that it could end, when that grant ends. So the intent would be that when this grant ends, it ends, unless we get money to go to the implementation process.
And would we get a second presentation about the compensation for community-based organizations, all the details, or, okay?
That was part of what we applied for in a grant, and we will share that with you, what the, how much grant was awarded, and for each line item in that grant.
Perfect, thank you.
And what's the toma, what's the timeline on this?
One, one thing I'll add, too, is that they invited us to apply for this. This was not something that we sought out. Do you have the timeline?
So I was gonna, Commissioner Moore, to, to your question, the lived experience, that's something that's done through the Safety and Justice Challenge work already, so the model is based off of the existing model, Safety and Justice. In terms of timeline, our anticipation is, once we get to approval, the formal kickoff for this grant would start in mid-June. With Urban Institute, it's nine months to develop the housing action plan. At the end of the nine months, that plan is submitted to the Urban Institute and MacArthur Foundation for review, and they'll determine if they're interested in funding that. At that point, once that decision is made, if the decision's made to move forward, we would then have eighteen months to implement the housing solution.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And this, these studies, the studies are gonna be, my question is, the studies are very focused on housing issues that are unique to folks that are rotating out of, like, being in the detention center or equivalent?
Yes. Yeah, and we did clarify with them about folks who are also experiencing prison reentry, and the focus, they said that we should target folks within the detention center, but there's obviously co-occurring folks, so it's, we can kind of decide that locally about our broad focus.
They told us our focus should be jail, reentry, to at the coldest point, sometimes it's core recurring, you went to jail, you went to prison, you went to jail.
Yeah.
But they told us our focus needs to be coming out of our detention center into our community.
And of course, we, I mean, we spend a lot of time talking about, like, we have a well-known affordable housing problem in our community that affects, you know, everybody, right? So, so that's been studied a lot, but it's, it's part of the challenge, I mean, A, people just may not have, you know, a lot of people struggle with being able to pay first month's rent, things like that, and so just beyond not necessarily having enough money to do all that, put all that together, that for places that, you know, a lot of, of course, landlords check references, things like that, that there's just like a lot of, you know, a high percentage of landlords that would say, I'm not going to rent to someone who's got this history, and that that's this big additional barrier for a lot of folks in that situation, is it, those kind of issues that are the, I'm just sort of trying to get a sense, like, what are the main sorts of things that this study will be taking a closer look at?
Yeah, so part of the planning period would be a gap and barrier analysis, and we would lean on our community engagement partners to connect us with folks who have a lived experience and try to understand those barriers that we may not even be aware of. We also focused in our application on the Familiar Faces Program, which works specifically with folks who are cycling in and out of the detention center, and so we already have some initial data from our, our work with those folks, and so we can kind of build from there. we can kind of build from there. But I think there's a lot of things, this planning period would really be a time to explore those issues and, and better understand them.
And Brownie, I can offer to that. I, I think there's a good number of folks, for example, if you have a pending misdemeanor charge that's in diversion, nonviolent offense, DA's approved, this is something that you get diversion for, that charge is still pending. You still have to deal with that, and so it might be a barrier to access for housing during that time. So getting people who are kind of already in the system and headed on the right track and making sure that we're addressing some of those practical, pragmatic issues, no one really thinks this person's dangerous, but we're hanging out there, trying to figure out where the first and last month's rent comes from for someone who just got out from paying their time to society.
So I understand that it's to address folks who are coming out of the detention center. Is there also the opportunity to look at those folks who have been released from the detention center but have inter-functional homelessness based on, you know, the numbers that we just saw from, from Lacey? Or is it specifically just being released?
Yes, they also mentioned it could be folks who are at risk of entering into the detention center.
Thanks, Chloe.
All right, thank you for the updates. Appreciate it. Commissioners, that's all the items on our agenda. So we can adjourn from the briefing meeting and we will reconvene at five o'clock for the regular meeting.